Okay. We are going to begin this Planning Commission, January 23rd. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the City of Independence. I welcome each of you in attendance, as well as those of you who are watching the meeting on City 7, again, to the January 23rd, 2024 Meeting of Independence Planning Commission. For those of you who are unfamiliar with our meetings, it is the responsibility of this commission to hold public hearings and make recommendations to the Independent City Council on matters relating to zoning and land use changes within the city. We also consider and make decisions on plats, special use permits, and other, and sometimes we drop our stuff up here, as well as changes in codes and policies that relate to city planning. And so the procedure is, once we have a report from staff, we will have, ask for the applicant to come forward and tell us anything that you would like to about the case, and then we ask if there's any of those for the case, and then if there's any against the case, and then we have whatever discussion we need to have, and then there's a ruling. So, with that, we'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance.
Let me pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Go Chiefs. Can't resist. Okay, so, will you do roll call, please?
Commissioner Ferguson.
Here.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neal. Commissioner L. Wiley.
I'm here.
And Chairman McLean.
Here. Thank you. Okay, first thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. Oh yeah, you're right. First, we will swear in any of those who would like to speak tonight. So if you think you'd like to speak, if you would stand up and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say I do.
I do.
Thank you. All right. First thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. Planning Commissioners, have you had time to look at the minutes?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second it.
Okay. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. The consent agenda has been approved. We have a case to be continued.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we continue case 24-600-... 24-100-05.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you.
It's been continued to the what, February 27th?
February 27th. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 24-100-05 has been continued until February 27th, 2024. Our first public hearing is case number 24-100-02, rezoning of 625 North Lakeview Avenue. And will staff give a report, please?
Um, I think we want to continue this.
Next one.
Sorry about that, it was a little out of order. Okay, this case is 24-600, no?
On ours, it's 24-100-02.
Okay, sorry about that. This is case 24-100-02, rezoning from R6, a single-family residential, or rezoning to R6, a single-family residential. As you can see, this property off College Street, about five blocks east of Nolan Road, two blocks south of 24, applicant Jesse Harful, the action to rezone an R30 PUD, high-density residential, and an R12, two-family residential, to an R6, single-family residential. And this is the notification map here of this property. See where it, near the intersection of Lakeview and College, they're on the southeast corner. And the property is within 185 feet of that. And this aerial view shows this rather large L-shaped property that sits there at the southeast corner of that intersection. You have a plat map here showing that this is actually three lots, with the house being at the southernmost, southeasternmost portion of the corner lot, as currently plotted. And here's our zoning map again, showing where R30 is, running along the south side of College to the east of Lakeview Avenue, how you have, to the west and to the north, neighborhoods on single-family, and then you have a neighborhood to the south on two-family, made up of both single-family and two-family residences in the area. The applicant seeks to have this property zoned so the property can be used to secure a loan. Further, the applicant has expressed some interest to replat the existing lots to develop additional single-family homes. Property history: This property was platted in 1923 as part of the Highland Park plat. The current property boundaries include all the lots 12, 13, and 43. The home on the property was built in 1930. While most of the home is situated on Lot 12, the structure crosses the lot boundaries into lots 13 and 43 as well, as we saw on that map a moment ago. When the city introduced zoning in 1965, lots 12 and 13, along with the other lots on College Street, were designated R4, which was our high-density residential designation. Lot 43, however, was designated to be R2, which is single-family residential, allows single-family, or two-family residential, which allows single and two-family. These lots retain their zoning classifications through the changes made to the city's zoning ordinance in 1980. In 2009, when the city adopted the current version of the Unified Development Ordinance, R2 zones were reclassified as R12, and R4 were reclassified as R30 PUD. This is how the property containing three lots wound up with mixed zoning. Background of the property here, the physical characteristics. Lot 12 and 13 are relatively flat along the portion of the property of budding College Street. The rear portions of these lots, and Lot 43, have a downward slope. The topography of Lot 43 drops more than 25 feet from the west to the east property lines. The house on the property is a blue bungalow and faces Lakeview Avenue. A walkout basement is visible from Lakeview. There is no garage or driveway on the property, but there is a gravel pull-off area in front of the home. The property has several trees adjacent to the street, and many more in the rear of the property. A large, open, green space sits behind the property on Lot 43. As far as characteristics of the area, the surrounding area is almost entirely comprised of single-family homes of similar age and design as the existing house on this subject Analysis: This property's consistency with the Independence for All Strategic Plan. The zoning of this property is consistent with the Independence for All Strategic Plan. One of the objectives of this plan is to stabilize and revitalize neighborhoods. Resoning this property to R6 will ensure that this neighborhood remains a stable, single-family area. Further, rezoning allows the property to be appropriately maintained if building permits are required. Lastly, the property could be subdivided in such a way to allow for additional, single-family homes, further strengthening the character of the neighborhood. As far as the comprehensive plans guiding land use principles that are relevant, the comprehensive plan envisions the future land use for this property and the surrounding area to be residential neighborhoods. One of the guiding principles outlined in the cop plan is to, quote, "preserve the integrity of existing neighborhoods and the historic nature of older neighborhoods." R30 PUD and apartments generally are not compatible with the existing character of the neighborhood. That is likely one reason the area designated R3 PUD has remained undeveloped despite being zoned for high-density apartments for nearly 60 years. Amending the zoning to R6 as opposed to R12 ensures that this property will remain single-family and further preserve the existing character of the neighborhood. Zoning: Section 14, 300, 02 of the Unified Development Ordinance outlaws the purpose... outlines the purposes, the purpose of independence's zoning districts by stating that they are, quote, "intended to be, intended to create, maintain, and promote a variety of housing opportunities for individual households and to maintain the desired physical character of the existing neighborhoods." By rezoning this property to R6, single-family residential, the city can ensure that any future use or development on this property will be in line with the single-family character of the area. If rezoned, the property would be contingent with the neighboring R6 area, or congruent, I'm sorry, congruent with the neighboring R6 area to the north and west. So there aren't any apparent historic or archaeological sites on these properties, and of course, being a developed neighborhood in that section of town, all the utilities are already present in the adjacent right-of-way, and there currently aren't any CIP investments planned for this area. As far as the review criteria goes, recommendations and decisions on zoning applications must be based on consideration of all these criteria. The first one, conformance with the, of the requested zoning with the comprehensive The plan envisions this area to be residential neighborhoods. Number two, conformance of the requested zoning with any adopted neighborhood or sub-area plans in the area. There are no sub-area plans currently designated for this area. Number three, the compatibility of the proposed zoning and the zoning and use of nearby property, including any overlay zone. The surrounding area is almost entirely zoned for single-family and two-family residences. However, the predominant use in the area is single-family. Rezoning the property to R6 is compatible with the surrounding R6 and R12 districts. Number four, compatibility with the proposed zoning and allowed uses with the character of the neighborhood. While the existing character of the neighborhood is that of single-family homes, rezoning to R6 will ensure the character of the neighborhood is retained. Number five, the suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted under the existing zoning regulations. With the current zoning, single-family homes are not permitted. The existing home on the property is currently legal non-conforming. This property is much more suited for single-family homes than high-density apartments. The length of time the property has remained vacant and zoned. The property has never been developed for high-density apartments, although being zoned for such for nearly 60 years, and of course, the other two properties are vacant, but the house has been there for 60 years, so. And the existing home on the property has been vacant now for several months, so. Number seven, to the extent to which approving the rezoning will detrimentally affect nearby properties, rezoning this property to R6 should not have detrimental effect on nearby properties. If anything, the effect should be positive. Number eight, the gain, if any, to the public health, safety, and welfare due to denial of the application, as compared to the hardship imposed upon the landowner, if any, because of, because of denial of the application. Denial of the rezoning will likely mean that the property remains as-is and make it difficult for investors and homeowners to clean up the property and subdivide it and develop new single-family homes. So this is that little blue bungalow right there, the southern end of that corner lot, facing toward Lakeview to northeast. This is north of that, closer to the intersection. And this is facing east, looking into the property, and facing south, looking down Lakeview Avenue, and facing southwest, looking across Lakeview Avenue, and facing west, directly across from Lakeview Avenue. Then this is facing northwest, looking across Lakeview Avenue. And this is facing southeast, looking at that north side of that bungalow, from the intersection of College and Lakeview. And then this is facing west, looking down College, and across the street, across College, and then down the other direction, down College. Staff recommends approval of this zoning request. Ready to take any questions?
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions before I bring the applicant forward? Okay. With the applicant, is the applicant here, and would you like to come forward? Guess that's a no. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none. Commissioners, do you have any other questions before I close the public hearing? Public hearing is closed. I would entertain more comments or a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This is pretty much a no-brainer, because we want to get back to R6, so I make a motion that we approve case 24-100-02.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 24-100-02 has been approved. Okay, the next case, number 24-100-03.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we postpone case 24-100-03 to...
February 13.
February 13.
We're ready for a vote.
No, we need a second.
No, we need a second, sorry.
Second.
Thank you.
Who's second?
Ashbaugh.
Ashbaugh. And we're, and we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley.
Yes.
Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 24-100-03 has been continued to February 13. All right, next case is case number 24-100-04, rezoning of 1220 Dickinson Road. Staff, will you give us a report, please?
Okay. This is case 24-100-04, rezoning 1220 Dickinson Road, applicant Marvin Mendoza. The action to rezone from R30 PUD, high-density residential plan unit development, to R6, single-family residential. So we're similar to the same thing we just looked at. So, this is the zoning map, so there's this large area of R30 PUD, right north of, what is that, RNS Automotive there, on the west side of Dickinson, as you can see. So you got, on the south side, you've got that strip of C2 that runs along 24. The houses across the street are single-family residential and are single-family homes. And then we have a R12 to the north with duplexes along that street there. The comprehensive plan envisions this whole area to be residential in use. And again, as you can see, this is a, there's that one bungalow that's, that's on the southeast corner of this property. Well, it's not a bungalow, it's a larger two-story, actually, house. It's on the southeast corner of that property, rest of it largely undeveloped. And here's the notification area, showing all the properties that had to be notified for the rezoning request. Rezoning background: Prior to 2009, the property was owned, R3 PUD, moderate-density residential plan development. Prior to 1972, the property was owned to R1, single-family residential, and the applicant needs to rezone the R18 PUD property to R6 to renovate the non-conforming, single-family Physical characteristics of the property: The six-and-a-half-acre lot has a existing two-and-a, two-and-a-half-story white, single-family residence with a large front porch, and a wide accessory garage, and a gravel driveway that widens near the garage in the house. The house sits at the southeast corner of the property, roughly 80 feet off Dickinson Road. The remainder of the property is mostly an undeveloped wooded tract. Characteristics of the area: The single-family homes and lots lie across Arty Mize Road and abut to the north. RNS Automotive abuts to the south, and more woodland lies to the, to the west. Dickinson Road lacks curbs and sidewalks, and has deep ditches in many places. As far as consistency with the Independence for All Strategic Plan, the application is within, keeping with the measures of success for, quote, "improved housing conditions." The comprehensive plan guiding land use principles for the current designation. The plan recommends residential neighborhood uses for this site. The guiding principle states the need to, quote, "facilitate the development of connected neighborhoods." This area is not within a sub-area plan. And as far as the zoning goes, of course, R6 is the zoning classification that allows for single-family dwellings, along with various other civic uses like schools, churches, government facilities, daycare, agriculture. Currently, the property is owned, R18 PUD, moderate-density residential plan unit development, which allows for duplexes and several types of multifamily dwellings. Also allows the other things as above, daycare centers, schools, churches. Historic and archaeological sites: There are not any apparent historic or archaeological issues with this property. Being located along Dickinson with built-up houses just to the east, there's utility services right there in the right-of-way adjacent. As far as floodplain and stream buffer, there is not a federally designated floodplain present on the property. Further, there is not a stream buffer associated with this rezoning area. There are no public improvements that would be required with this, and the city, in fact, does not have any proposed capital projects along here at this time. Review criteria: Recommendations and decisions on rezoning applications, again, must be based on the consideration of all the following criteria. The first one, conformance with the requested zoning with the comprehensive plan. The plan envisions residential neighborhoods for the area, and the guiding principle is that, is to facilitate the development of connective neighborhoods. Number two, as far as conformance with the requested zoning with any adopted neighborhood or sub-area plans. Stated earlier, there are not any sub-area plans for this area. Number three, the compatibility of the proposed zoning with zoning and use of nearby property, including any overlay zoning. There are many nearby developed, single-family lots to the north and east of various sizes. The proposed... Number four, as far as compatibility of the proposed zoning with the allowed use, and the allowed uses with the character of that neighborhood, the proposed R6 zoning is compatible with the area's single-family homes. Number five, the suitability of the... Number five, the suitability of the subject property to the uses to which has been restricted, it's been restricted under the existing regulations. The R eighteen P U D zoning prevents this lot from being used for single-family homes. You've got, that's on multifamily, you've got just two-family and above are permitted, so. Number six, the length of time the subject property has remained vacant as zoned. The residence has been vacant for more than a decade, according to the applicant. Number seven, the extent of which approving the rezoning would be det, would, will detrimentally affect nearby properties. The rezoning should have no detrimental effect on area properties. The rezoning will permit and limit the lot to single-family uses. Number eight, the gain, if any, to the public health, safety, and welfare due to the denial of the application as compared to a hardship imposed upon the landowner, if any, as a result of the denial of the application. If the rezoning were denied, the applicant would not be able to renovate the unoccupied, single-family residence. Or at least as a single-family residence, because you'd have to have a duplex or above, so. So here's that residence. And we're looking directly west at it from standing in Dickinson. Or sitting in a warm truck on Dickinson. Facing west, looking at the property to the north or the undeveloped portion, a little bit farther north up the road. This is looking northeast across Stan, we're in, I'm in R N S parking lot, basically. Looking northeast across the street to the houses that are across from this property. And then this is mid-block there. Across the street, so. Staff recommends approval of this zoning request. I'll take any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, if the applicant's here, would you like to come forward?
Apparently, the applicant did not come.
Okay. So, is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none. Commissioners, any more questions before I close the public hearing? Public hearing is closed. I would entertain a motion or?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
I would recommend approval of the rezoning for case twenty-four one hundred dash four, one twenty, or one two-two oh Dickinson Road.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you. All right, we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
And Chairman McClain?
Yes. Case number twenty-four dash one hundred dash zero four, rezoning of twelve twenty Dickinson Road has been approved. Okay, next case is twenty-four dash one hundred dash zero six, rezoning of M seventy-eight Highway and Little Blue Parkway. Are you presenting these two together or separately?
I have one presentation for both of them. Of course, there'll have to be two votes. And then the applicant has a presentation as well, so.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're going to be talking about both case twenty-four one twenty-five oh two and case twenty-four one hundred sixty-five?
Right.
Okay.
So. So basically, the one hundred level case is up toward Seventy-eight Highway and Little Blue Parkway. And it's the straight zoning going to I one. And then the other is the intersection with Truman Road, or actually, it's all three intersections. And we'll see in the map, we'll see the map in a second. And that's the expansion of the B P area to the south. And, well, not expansion, but the conversion of the, of the C two portion to B P as well. And the alter or reapproval of the preliminary development plan. The applicants are Chris Chandler of North Point Development. And again, the actions are rezonings and a preliminary development plan. So first, we'll start with the straight zoning. So you all had, have gotten supplemental rezoning papers that I handed out before. Because what was in the packet was, there was an error in the size of the current C two. So it actually goes a lot farther west, and you'll, you can see from looking at this map. So with the existing zoning for where the industrial? Sorry about that. I thought I had that turned off. Where this industrial section, or this industrial building will be, a portion of the building is, or a portion of that property is currently B P, but most of it is currently C two. So when it's rezoned to I one to match that on the north side of Seventy-eight, you can see it's all purple there, so. And then that's the straight zoning. And then in the one twenty-five case, okay, we start off with the same going, zoning again, and we're dealing with this piece of property that is the, in the triangle that is Truman Road and Seventy-eight, and then going across Little Blue and then across Truman to the south. And there's a little section of B P P U D right along Little Blue on that southwest portion there. And that would that will turn blue as well. And the, I think we got two copies of the same thing here on the presentation. Then the whole thing would be the B P, including that little red triangle down at the corner. So this is that, the context of all of that there. Overview of the site. And some of the neighboring development, too. You can see the, the other industrial on the other side of Seventy-eight. And this is an elevation of what that industrial building will look like. And then here in the P U D section, B P section, south of that, what I pointed out, being the light blue earlier. There are, we don't have actual design jet of what those buildings will necessarily look like, but these are the, some of the, the standards that are, they're going to have to meet, as spelled out in the P U D. These architectural standards and, including exterior finishes and different facade materials. And treatments around windows and storefronts. So. Here's how this area appears right now, is, you know, or how it appeared as cultivated fields prior to construction. North Point Development proposes a minor modification to the east Gate Commerce Center. The portion of the development, and this is the portion that is the, the planned development, the, that was blue, the B P, is approximately three hundred and twenty-one thousand square feet of commercial space. The property is located at Seventy-eight and Truman Road and Little Blue Parkway. The properties are currently, like I said, B P and C two, and the applicant is proposing the zoning change to increase the size of that business park. The main intent of this rezoning is to shift the buildings to have a little, to have a Little Blue Parkway frontage. So this creates a buffer from the trail while also giving better visibility from Little Blue Parkway. This zoning is consistent with the property in the area. And buildings within the B P area will be designated to be pedestrian-friendly by way of connecting walkways between adjacent buildings and public streets. In addition, the buildings themselves will be designed with vertical and horizontal articulation and the use of glass to provide a two-story appearance. The applicant is requesting that there be no restrictions on the building size or lot size. This will allow for a mixture of larger industrial buildings with smaller commercial lots. They can be sized to fit future tenant needs. So. Now, the straight zoning is just for the building to the north. And that's part of this section that's contemplated to have two hundred and ninety square feet of Class A industrial space. The track is located southeast of the intersection of Seventy-eight and Little Blue Parkway. And this is the relocation of building B four from across the Parkway. And shifting the industrial building to the east of the Parkway matches, of course, the adjac, the adjacent industrial uses to the north. So the buildings within the industrial zone area will be designed to be versatile with large number of, for, you know, large regional and, and national users. Analysis, as far as consistency with the Independence for All Strategic Plan, this application, along with others proposed by North Point, furthers the goal of increasing the economic prosperity of the community and providing additional employment opportunities. It will also support the development of industrial office, business, park, and the development of a key city corridor. Comprehensive plan guiding land use principle for this property. The plan, the comprehensive plan guiding principle that is most related to this use is, quote, "to provide sufficient opportunities for industrial development sites within the community and promote the diversification of the city's commercial and industrial base." And of course, this area is within the long-time designated Blue Pellet Plan area. Analysis, far as public facilities. There will not be any new streets created with these lots. Instead, the existing street network will provide access. With this rezoning and with this movement of, of buildings, there's no change in where the driveways will be compared to the previous plan prior to this rezoning. Stormwater, the submitted preliminary stormwater drainage study indicates that tributary management will be addressed in future development plans. Similarly, the proposed basins, migration areas, and other natural amenities are integral part of the development pattern and utilization of land within the project. And then there, of course, is the detention, volume buyout option for the sites here as well. Santeri Sewer, there's a large transmission rine along the east side of Little Blue Parkway, owned by the Little Blue Valley Sewer District. It will not allow tie-ins directly to this main. North Point must use existing C infrastructure or Blue Springs sewer mains to extend sewer facilities. And of course, all mains are public. Water, water main extension plans will be required for all phases of the development. And a set of water main extension plans will be required to be submitted and reviewed and approval for any construction that may begin on the water mains. And lastly, historic and archaeological sites, again, these are cultivated fields. And so there don't appear to be any historic or archaeological sites that have been located, at least now. Review criteria. These are the requ, review criteria required for a P U D, which are a little more extensive than the, the straight zoning, so I'll go through the, the review criteria for the P U D. Number one, the consistency with the comprehensive plan. One of the comprehensive plan's guiding principles was to provide sufficient opportunities for industrial sites within the community and promote the city's industrial base. Number two, as we, it's, the plan is consistent with the P U D standards of section fourteen nine oh two. This is intended to allow a design flexibility that results in greater public benefit that could be achieved and, of course, using the conventional zoning regulations. Number three, nature and extent of common space in the P U D. Connection will be made with the Trace Park Trail System from the south, southernmost parking lot and, and open space around the stormwater mitigation area south of Truman Road. Number four, the reliability of the proposals for maintenance and conservation of common open space. North Point states it will construct, manage, and maintain the properties. It also has no intent to sell any units or buildings. Number five, the adequacy or inadequacy of the amount and function of the common open space in terms of the densities and dwelling types proposed in the plan. This is inapplicable because this is a proposed business project. Of course, again, this is referring to the B, B P zoning portion. Number six, the extent to which the proposed use will adversely affect the capacity of safety portions of the street network or present? or present parking problems in the vicinity of the property. Whether adequate provision for public services provides adequate control over vehicular traffic and furthers humidity of light and air and recreation and visual enjoyment. So the public services in this area are adequate to serve this project and will be extended to the sites as necessary. This project will not adversely affect the street network in the vicinity of the project. However, the improvements are necessary to Truman Road. Adequate parking is provided internally to the complex and no street parking is allowed on any of the surrounding streets. Number seven, extent to which the proposed use will have a substantially adverse effect on adjacent property and the development or the conservation of the neighborhood area. So much like the proposed East Gate Business Park there at Arty-Mizen Road and Little Blue Parkway, these sites are isolated with the northeast side, abutting property that is North Point. The west side is encircled by roadways and adjacent properties and is near the city power plant and the concrete plant. As such, the mitigation of impact measures, relocating traffic, parking, recreation, and other related should not have any substantial adverse impact on the area. Whether adverse impacts have been mitigated to the maximum practical extent, efforts have been planned by the developer to reduce impacts to the area. And this is done by restricting access points to the network. As I told you, it's not, has not changed from the previous intent as far as entrances and where they're located. And providing adequate stormwater management and of course, extending the existing public facilities throughout the sites. Number nine, whether the preliminary development plan represents a unique development proposal that could not have been accomplished through the use of non-PUD zoning regs. When considering this project's mixture of proposed office, commercial, and industrial uses, combined site layouts and building designs, the use of the PUD designation is the only option. And ten, the sufficiency of the terms and conditions proposed to protect interest of the public and the resonance of the PUD in case of a plan that proposes development over a period of years. While this would be conducted in multiple phases as the entire development, it's of course, under one ownership and guidance, so. So we'll go through the pictures real quickly. So this is on 78, just northeast of Little Blue Parkway. So we're looking southwest. So this would be the site of the straight rezoning of the I-1, the B4 industrial building. And this is looking at that site again at its western edge. And then this is at its western edge, looking back to the east, looking with 78 Highway there off to the left by the utility poles. Okay, this intersection is about a block south. And this is Truman Road and Little Blue Parkway, the southeast corner of that Parkway. You can see the sign for Harmony there. This is the BP, or one of the three corners of the BP property. This is the intersection here, so the property, one portion is off to the left of us, off the picture, across the street. And then behind me is another portion, and then to the right is another. And then the one straight ahead is not part of this rezoning, so. This is that triangle property that is west of Little Blue Parkway that comes together at a point at 78 and Truman Road by the power plant. I've just compressed the picture, zooming in on the power plant from this Truman and Little Blue Parkway intersection. And then this is at Truman and 78 across from the power plant. Okay, recommendation, staff recommends approval of these rezonings and the preliminary development plan with the following conditions, and that's on the preliminary development plan. Number one, retail buildings in this business park phase shall not have restrictions on the maximum building sites. However, the development sites shall meet the BP-PUD floor area ratio for the site. Number two, the permissible uses of these properties includes all BP-PUD uses permitted by right plus businesses with drive-through facilities. Development must follow Section 14302 of the UDO for the BPPUD district. Number three, the previously approved design guidelines shall apply to all construction within the Eastland Commerce Center. For restaurant parking, is established at one parking space per three seats. Individual buildings containing retail or office uses shall provide at least one space per 500 square feet for warehouse and manufacturing. The parking ratio shall be one per thousand. Number five, provide a draft copy of the covenants and restrictions with the first final development plan. Conclude, it's not conclude, it should be include. Include detailed landscaping plans and elevations with the final development plans. Any future improvements to Truman Road will be in accordance with the relevant development agreement between the city and the developer. Number eight, each new driver access location for this development plan will need to be evaluated, approved, or denied on its own merits and the traffic impact study updated accordingly. Nine, the current stream buffers and new proposed stream buffers shall be more clearly indicated on the final development plans and the final plans. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you. That was a lot. Okay, commissioners, any questions before we bring the applicant up? Nope. Okay, will the applicant come up, please? Please state your name and your address.
Justice.
You can set it up on top. I don't need to do that, but you do.
Need a taller podium. Trent Squires, 3315 North Oak Trafficway, Kansas City, Missouri. I have copies of this presentation, if you guys would like.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Good evening. My name's Trent Squires, Development Manager with North Point Development, 3315 North Oak Trafficway, Kansas City, Missouri. Presenting with me here tonight, Grant Pauli with North Point Development, and Brian Forker, also present from North Point, Chris Chancellor and Jennifer George. Since the last time we were here in front of this commission, a lot of good progress has been made. We've started and finished construction on the first two buildings located towards the southern boundaries of our, there we go, towards the southern boundary of our project's limits. And as I'm sure you saw last week, we had the ribbon cutting for the Fort Connect space and the 13th Career Services League location. As we wrap up construction on the first phase, we set our sights on the next phase of the development, specifically around Highway 78 and Little Blue Parkway. For a building we call Building B4, located in the triangle between Highway 78 to the north, Little Blue Parkway to the east, and Truman Road to the south. As we worked through the preliminary plating and preliminary grading plans for this site, we realized that this site had quite a few challenges. The dash line that runs through the building there represents a large water main and a telecommunications line that will require relocation for this building to be constructed as you see it. Additionally, we felt that access into this site required a unnecessary turn onto the arterial Truman Road that could be avoided with a minor change in the plan. As we dug into this more, we really liked the concept of moving Building B4 to the east side of the Parkway, which would avoid the relocation of the water main and telecommunications line, the fiber line. And it would also consolidate access to and from the building to be on Little Blue Parkway and Highway 78, both of which are four-lane road sections, as you all well know. South of Truman Road here, and as a reminder, Truman Road is running page left to page right and has the dip there between Highway 78 and Little Blue Parkway. South of Truman Road in the business park area, we're modifying the zoning there to accommodate a second access point to Little Blue Parkway while maintaining the original access point on Truman Road. Our current zoning is shown here with business park sandwiched between industrial to the north and to the south. And you can see those orange triangles labeled C2 are commercial currently. And the business park here spans east and west of Little Blue Parkway. And on the east side of the Parkway spans north and south of Truman Road. Our proposed rezoning tweaks the north boundary to fit Building B4 inside that industrial area while also modifying the business park slightly to accommodate that second access point towards the southern end of the area in purple there and tweaking the north boundary of the business park. So layering in our proposed site plan, you can see Building B4 fitting that industrial kind of blue triangle up to the north end and the modification to the business park shown on the most southern end of that purple area. One additional item that I'd like to quickly highlight. We know the importance of the Little Blue Trace Trail. And I added this slide to show that nothing that we've proposed here with this minor rezoning change affects the parkland dedication shown in yellow or the buffering of the trail. In fact, we may be able to accommodate a second trail access or trail connection on the south boundary shown in this slide while maintaining the original proposed trailhead north of Truman Road. I want to reiterate, however, the trail's protections remain intact. In closing, this minor change is, we feel, is the best use for the Little Blue Parkway and Highway 78 interchange and supplementary roads. And I appreciate your time this evening, and would like to open up the floor to any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
I have a few questions. And it's not particularly about what you're moving the building. It's more of a couple of questions about parking. Is the one space per thousand square feet, is that too much? Is that going to make too much parking? Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Is it too much parking?
It's going to be too big for what the building needs.
I would say, from what we've seen, that's generally in line with the tenants' demands that are going in these buildings. So to answer that, I would say generally no, but there are exceptions. You know, some tenants, you know, have different size employee counts than others. And so it would be maybe more of a case by case, depending on the tenant.
Would it be your intent that if that is the case, that you would bring it before the planning, I mean, for the department?
I might have to swear you in.
Yeah, that's fine.
Will you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the whole truth? Before this, Commissioner, if so, say I do.
I do.
Thank you. State your name and address.
Grant Pauli, 3315 North Oak Trafficway, Kansas City, Missouri. So I think, just to make sure I'm understanding your question correctly, you're saying, is the one per thousand too much for the commercial areas? Is that?
What I've observed over time, living in the city, is a lot of times the commercial parking lots are, for the most part, you know, except for maybe one or two days.
Yeah.
They're too big. And so I didn't know if you had had any just input about that. It's just basically a question. I mean, I'm sure there's some buildings that are going to have a lot of people, but there's some that are probably going to be really big and they have a lot fewer people.
Yeah, so I think the ratio that you're referring to is specifically for the industrial size or industrial buildings. And then what I would say for the commercial building specifically is each one of those users would have to present their own site plan. So they would tailor their parking to their specific needs.
Okay. My other question has to do with the Little Blue buyout for the drainage. That's a 1,200 feet from the river towards the building or the parking lot, correct?
Thereabouts, yes.
Okay. Do you folks intend on using that?
So if you'll look on, if you see on the plan here, all the pretty blue rectangles we have, that's all the detention that we're contemplating for our park. You know, as part of our original approvals, we, you know, analyzed stormwater runoff pretty significantly. And as you can see, there's a substantial amount of land that has been dedicated to stormwater runoff.
Okay, so, and so basically, if you take the buyout, it's basically draining what it's been draining for years and years, right? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Another question, well, maybe a question at the end, but more a thank you. Loved the ribbon cutting, love Fort Connect, the CSL building. Plenty of parking, I enjoyed that. My question is really, this is my area. I live over there. I go down Truman every day. I go down Little Blue every day. I go down 78 Highway to get home. I just want to understand in your vision a little more about the actual three areas and what you, so I heard drive-through restaurants.
Yeah.
Small businesses, I'm guessing, in the business park. So just kind of wanted a little more of your, it's going to look very different than what those giant Fort Connect buildings look like.
Yes, ma'am. So for, obviously, as you saw at the Fort Connect, those spaces would be isolated to our industrial zoning areas. And so what we envisioned for the PUD areas is exactly as you described. The smaller restaurants, single business, or small businesses, maybe some flex space. What we envision is that as we build out our industrial area and, you know, bring people to that specific location for jobs and those people have to eat somewhere. And so then we would envision those types of uses coming in and following in after that. So I think you described it very well, what our vision is for that area.
of those concerns. Sure we would have gotten used to it, but I like this way better. Okay.
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Commissioners, any more questions of the applicant or city staff? Okay, closing the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion on case number 24-100-06.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to, I would like to move case 24-100-06 rezoning Little Blue Parkway and 78 Highway.
Thank you, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, and we're ready for a vote.
Can we repeat the motion, please?
I would like to move case 24-100-06 rezoning Little Blue Parkway and 78 Highway.
Thank you, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, and we're ready for a vote.
Can we repeat the motion, please?
I would like to move case 24-100-06 rezoning Little Blue Parkway and 78 Highway.
No, this is straight zoning.
You're right. We're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 24-100-06 rezoning of M-78 Highway and Little Blue Parkway has been approved. What are we going to do with you, Brian? All right, next, case number 24-125-02, I would take a motion, or do you have any more comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of case 24-125-02 rezoning PUD, M-78 Highway and Little Blue Parkway.
I would second her motion.
With conditions.
I'm going to amend mine to add with conditions.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, Counselor, I might have jumped. Did I need to, because they're separate cases, did I need to ask if there's anybody here to speak for or against it between?
I think that would be cleaner, I would have done that, I guess.
Would you like me to go backwards?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, let's do that. Reverse. Case number 24, is there anybody here, case number 24-125-02, is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none, Commissioners, any other discussion before I close the public hearing? Okay, public hearing is closed, and I would entertain a remotion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I will remotion.
Thank you. Is there a second? You're seconding?
That's with conditions, right?
With conditions.
With conditions, yes. The same conditions.
And Commissioner O'Neill seconded. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 24-125-02 rezoning PUD, M-78 Highway and Little Blue Parkway has been approved. Congratulations, and again, thank you, we appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
Okay, anything for the greater good?
I just have a couple of questions, as always.
Okay.
Why do we continue the one for the Dollar General?
Yeah.
I can answer that one. There was a error in the letters that they had sent out, so in order to correct that, by continuing it to the next case, it gives them the opportunity to resend out that corrected letter, and then, since we've basically moved it to a date certain, and then that will correct that, that error.
Thank you, and I do have one more question. On the Walmart sign, there was a 12, it said it exceeded the 12-square-foot limit for the canopy or the projected.
Yes.
And I'm just asking, okay, so why is there, why is there a set limit on a canopy sign? I mean, wouldn't it be, make more sense to have it just be a certain percentage of the canopy? Or, I mean, it doesn't matter to you guys, it doesn't really matter to me, I'm just asking.
I mean, it's, it's, the way our code's written, it says canopy or projecting sign, and our projecting signs, which are like over the sidewalk at, on the square and stuff, makes sense while we're, while we have this limited square footage, maybe we should decouple those two.
Well, it's not that I don't enjoy our time together, I'm just kind of thinking that was the main reason for the whole thing, right? Was that it had this 12-square foot and it's this huge canopy, so I just, was wondering.
Ma'am, did you have a question?
Yes, that is why I'm here for the sign. I didn't hear come up, I don't know if it was approved or not.
It was, it was proved in the consent agenda.
Sorry you had to sit here all this time.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay, I wasn't sure, so I was just being patient.
You were very patient then. All right, if nobody has anything else they want to talk about?
Do we know what next meeting looks like? Since we continued a couple of things to it?
There's, there's two Tuesdays between, so we have an extra Tuesday to the next meeting than what we normally do.
I think we may have three cases.
Oh, I thought you meant how many weeks.
No, I think you're talking about cases. You're talking, you're talking about cases, right? Number of cases? Yeah, I think we have three, is that right? Even with this continued case, is there another?
I think we have, well, we have, we have, we have two preliminary plats.
Oh, that's right, we do have two preliminary plats.
So we have five cases, really, but the two would be consent items.
We just want to know how many beverages to bring, and how much caffeine we need. Yes.
It may be a little shorter than today.
Oh.
Since those are consent, and it's essentially plats associated with what you just looked at.
We already done.
Today, with the North Point.
Okay.
I think one's an STR.
A little bit.
One of them may be an STR, yes.
Okay.
So maybe I take that back.
I was going to say, do you anticipate any?
So far, I don't think so on that one, but.
It's a one-caffeinated beverage meeting.
Okay, so hold on, I got another question. So this meeting is going to be longer than the next meeting, probably.
He's now reversing. He's not going to predict.
Yeah, it's hard to predict, but.
Well, because I have an.
I would say that the next one's probably going to be about the same, if not shorter. I would assume shorter unless something really weird comes up. Is that a fair statement?
That never happens.
I didn't understand what he said about changing the meeting to Wednesday? Is that what you said?
No, 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 no.
Is it the meeting might be shorter than this one?
No, I know, but I thought he said something about changing because it's Tuesday.
No, 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 there's no date change.
We don't meet on that one.
Oh, okay.
I mean, you can come up here if you want to, but we're not going to be here.
That's what I thought, I thought, well, we're changing.
All right.
I move to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned at 7:19.